Can I have your attention, please? Who can whistle? My whistle's not here. Can I have your attention, please?
Slap one if you can hear him. Slap two if you can hear him. We're the teachers for the girls.
Excuse us. Thank you for your attention. See, I can't project.
Just want to first thank all of you for being here today. We're excited to have you here in our district. As I said, it's your new staff orientation and also on opening day. We're excited that you are here with us and that you're going to be doing great things for all of our students and other staff that we have here in the district. At this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Dave Kilkhorst read through all of our new hires. Those of you that are here, we appreciate you being here. If you could just kind of give us a quick wave so that the board has an opportunity to put a face to a name. And Matt will also get that recorded for Pat being. I do want, before I turn things over to Dave, also recognize Jude, who's going to be receiving a certificate once the meeting starts because he participated in those who don't know in the World Series Challenge, which was a part of the Little League World Series for students. And he did an awesome job from the video that I saw on Twitter. Or Axe is in the video. We'll recognize Jude out there. But without further delay, I'm going to have Dave go through and identify all of our new staff. And again, just give us a quick wave. And can't thank you enough for being a part of our team.
All right, I'll try not to mess any names up, but I can't promise anything. So we'll start off. Mitchell Elfa, Special Education at McNamara Elementary. We have Catherine Bach, a kindergarten teacher at Eldon Elementary. Floyd Bourgeois is a Global Teacher at Dirki Junior High School. We have Joshua Brazil, Grade Seven, Ray Middle School. Alyssa Burmeister, Grade Five, Van Buren Elementary. Nicholas Calberico is a CTE Teacher at Ray Middle School. Charles Clifford, Special Education, Dirki Junior High School. Jennifer Dom, Special Education, Van Buren Elementary. Deborah Durgers, Spanish, Dirki Junior High School. Dugger. I apologize for that. Thank you. Jacqueline Frenzi, Phys Ed, District Wide, Elementary. Heather Garcia Barnett, Grade Six at Ray Middle School. Gabriella Giovelli Sullivan. Did I say that right? That's a speech therapist, District Wide. Diana Gourigula is a Special Education Teacher at Palmer Elementary School. Ryan Hawthorne, CTE, Ray Middle School. Julie Hempson, Social Studies, Ray Middle. Chloe Lynch, CTE Facts, Dirki Junior High School and Baker High School. Bridgette McGlynn, School Psychologist, Van Buren Elementary. Alexa Meager, Science, Ray Middle. Jo Marie Murphy is a Fifth Grade Teacher at Van Buren Elementary. Grace Nicolini, UPK, Van Buren Elementary. Lee Kazagi, Orchestra, Eldon Elementary. William Randall, Social Studies at Ray Middle. Margaret Reed is a Library Media Specialist at Reynolds Elementary. Karen Russo, Social Worker, Eldon Elementary. Aaron Sherfling, Special Education, UPK, McNamara Elementary. Jack Shirts, Grade Five, Palmer Elementary. Noel Sazo, Grade Seven, Ray Middle. Inez Tamila.
Tamilia.
Tamilia.
Inez Tamilia.
E N L, District Wide.
E N L.
Keegan Thompson is our band teacher at Van Buren Elementary. Lauren Williams, German, Dirki and Baker High School. We have new teaching assistant staff. Kristy Bixler, Palmer Elementary. Darcey Buza, Reynolds Elementary. Michelle Crawford, Dirki Junior High. Nolan Exford, Van Buren Elementary. Melissa Thoren, Van Buren Elementary. Shannon Horne, Van Buren Elementary. Jennifer Labargo Dupre, Dirki Junior High School. Sidney McKay, Dirki Junior High School. Stephanie Meeker, Dirki Junior High School. Kaylee Mizetti, Dirki Junior High School. Kelly Palmer, Dirki Junior High School. Nicole Palmer, McNamara Elementary. Isabella Rashan, Van Buren Elementary. Jacqueline Stansky, McNamara Elementary. And Kaylee Stewart, Dirki Junior High School. And then we have some of our new non-instructional staff hires. We have Ross Anderson as a bus driver. John Burgess, one of our new custodial workers. Erica Cardinow, Account Clerk Two, District Office. Jellineck Cunningham is a new teacher aide at Dirki Junior High School. Kristen Ewald, New Food Service Helper, Ray Middle School. Monica Fuller, one of our new school nurses at Ray Middle School. Rebecca Murphy, another one of our new school nurses. We had St. Mary's, WOCA, and District Wide. Alicia Preston, Food Service Helper, Ray Middle School. Kaler Probst, Food Service Helper, CW Baker High. Sarah Reinhardt, Food Service Helper, Dirki Junior High School. Christopher Ross, another one of our bus drivers. Kena Redo, Food Service Helper at Ray Middle School. Christina Stanley, Food Service Helper, McNamara Elementary. Finally, Kaylee Virginia, a bus attendant. That's all.
So that represents just shy of 60 new employees here in the district. We are very thankful that we have all of the positions filled, unlike some of our neighboring districts. So again, we can't thank you for becoming a part of our team. We're excited, all of the great things that you're going to do with us, for our students. And can't thank you enough on behalf of the board and the district leadership team. So welcome, thank you. And we're not going to make you stay. If you'd like to stay, you can stay for the meeting. But we know you probably have things to do in preparation for tomorrow. But stay here and have some more cookies. We're going to head over there at about seven o'clock to begin the regular. Thank you.
Good evening. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Before we start our meeting, can I, or pick someone? I think we should observe a moment of silence for almost 3,000 lives lost 22 years ago. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Kim, are you okay with the roll call?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, resolved. The Board of Education put the agenda for September 11th, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting.
So Luke?
Andy? Luke? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. And with that, we'll let Joe and carry on the spotlight. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. The recognition of newly hired personnel.
So we had a really nice reception for our new staff. I think the majority of them have opted to go home and prepare for class tomorrow morning with our students. But just an overview, we'll pull that up. We have just under 60 new staff members that have been hired by the district, all encompassing from teachers to teaching assistants to bus drivers to teacher aides, clerical support. We're very excited about the new group of employees that we have and certainly expect great things from them. So thank you to all of them for being part of our team.
Yes, certainly it was very nice to meet some people. And we welcome them to a superb educational unit. I think they appreciate the fact that they've joined one of the best educational groups in upstate New York. Dave put together a great summary of the hires and a couple of things that stood out to me was, number one, almost 50% of them have over six years of teaching experience already. And number two, those with graduate degrees, meaning that they have graduate degrees, the average GPA of graduate degrees was 3.83. I think I didn't have to say that for myself generally. So I hope I got that right. 3.83, that's pretty impressive. Okay, anything else there? Well, welcome all the people. Now I guess we should do the spotlight, maybe, right?
Yes, we're very excited this evening. We're going to first start by recognizing one of our students, an eighth grade Dirki Junior High School student, Jude Plankstaff. And I'm going to have Mr. Gazowski and myself will present him with a certificate. Before I stand up for that, I just wanted to say that Jude is being recognized on behalf of the district and the Board of Education. He participated in the 2023 Challenger Exhibition Game as part of the Little League World Series last month. And certainly Jude made us proud on that national stage. And so we're very excited this evening to recognize Jude for all of his efforts. It was awesome. If you have a chance to see the video on Axe or Twitter, however you refer to that social media platform, I know there was a great video of him on that platform. And it was certainly great to see in person on television. So congratulations, Jude. We're proud of you.
I need a big smile right here, guys. Awesome, thank you.
You're Mr. Preferred.
Sorry. I did, I did.
Yeah. Perfect. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next student to do the spotlight this evening is for one of our Baker High School seniors, Zoe Holloway. And she is playing by Leslie Cartier and Justin Ashworth, two of our Library Media Specialists, who helped put together this unbelievable promotional video, which I think many of you have seen. I certainly thought it was probably the highlight of the opening day ceremonies that we had with all of the staff on August 30th. So we're going to watch that video and then we'll certainly recognize Zoe. So enjoy.
Welcome to Ballenville, great place to be.
Something new happens every day.
Come join us.
We're here for everybody.
Home of peace.
A little bit more context. So Zoe actually was one of our counselors as a part of the film camp. So there were 50, a little over 50 students that participated in the film camp, which was for sixth through eighth grade students. And those students worked with Ms. Cartier and Mr. Ashworth and the counselors to create, basically. I asked Leslie back in June, if there's any way we could have wanted the task to create some type of promotional video amongst other options that these students had. And there was a core group of students that put together the footage and then they came up with their own promotional videos. And then Zoe took it upon herself as a member of the Baker News team and certainly involved in the media to put together what you saw on that screen. And I do know that we've tasked them with a few more assignments. And hopefully you're going to see a lot more from this wonderful student throughout the school year as well as other students that represent Baker News and the Media Arts Program here that we have, thanks to all of our Library Media Specialists. So without further delay, Zoe, why don't you come on up?
One more. Awesome. Thank you.
And last, but not least, as part of our spotlight, we wanted to highlight all of the great things that occurred this summer. And our Public Media Specialist, Sarah Buckshot, put together this short, three-minute video, which is from photos and video of all of our summer camps and extended scooter program from this summer. So let's take a look and thank you, Sarah, for putting this together. You can certainly tell from all the smiling faces that those 1,000, over 1,000 students had an awesome time at our Richmond camps this summer. We're excited. Hopefully we'll be able to continue offering all those great opportunities for students moving forward.
That's great. That was inspiring. And Sarah, thank you very much for putting that together. That was great. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to correspondence board activities and committee reports. And I might say that I certainly enjoyed August 30th and seeing everybody in the Heltar Alcarro Stadium and listening to the band and watching some of that performance. Anything else? The board was there. So anything else?
Victor and I had a chance to meet and greet every one of the bus drivers as they got off their routes on the first day. We took time to go over. We were able to give them cold water and Gatorade. I haven't seen more of a professional group in a very long time. Everybody was excited to be part of the district. All your new hires were excited. So, but it was nice that Victor and I were able to go over and do that.
Nice, really nice bunch to greet. And everybody seemed very enthused on the first day.
And you did the same thing for the custodial and maintenance crew two days before that, maybe?
The week. So the week before, Vic and I, we were able to get water again in coolers. We put them on carts. We went up and down the hallways. We made sure every custodial staff got whatever they needed to drink. A lot of the teachers, we went in the rooms and did the same. We also took the time to go out. And the guys were cutting the grass. And we walked water out to the guys on the machines. And it was kind of funny. We were at Palmer. And one guy was cut way out back. So Victor and I pulled off the side of River Road. And here's two guys walking across the field. And the guy's almost at a parking lot. And he's got like, his eyes were like a deer in the headlights going, oh, what did I do now? Hey, here you go. Here's a bottle of water for you. Thanks for what you're doing. So again, it was, I think it meant a lot to Vic and I, but I think it meant a lot for the staff as well.
Also, I guess there was a policy meeting just before. I don't know if there's any report.
I want you to quickly, Board, is the National Committee doing it? Okay, so the Policy Committee reviewed the 5,000 series. There's a ton of policies because they're currently in law or regulation that are not necessary. They're duplicates, basically a rederivation of what we know to be the law and New York State regulations. So we will be looking forward a ton of policies for retirement at our next meeting. And we will also bring the remaining portion of the 5,000 series for just the general review. The Policy Committee got the ability to do that. We're also going to have Policies 1340, Principles of Board of Education members. That policy will be up for first reading. I do anticipate a little bit of a discussion for that based on some feedback. I felt it was important since it started with the full board to be for the full board to have dialogue on that. And then we also have a quick update to the fundraising, my students' policy, which is 7430. We are committed to moving forward. We'll, we've added two Policy Committee dates so that we can get through all of our work this year. And we are looking at reviewing the 6,000 series for some additional retirements and review at our next meeting, which will be on Monday, October 30th. So it was a productive meeting. And moving forward, the committee has charged us as well at looking at upgrading policy. It'll be a year-long review with staff as well as the curriculum development policy. Subway 210, we need one.
Okay, thank you. Any other activities or committee reports this time? Okay, then Mia gives her first in-school Zoom report.
Thank you. So the day before school started, students from SAC, which is also Student Advisory Council, a lot of students from different leadership groups come together. They met and decorated the school. I am by drawing with chalk on the sidewalk and washable markers on the windows. Just positive messages, love making everyone feel welcome. First day kicked off well. Many were adjusting to the new systems. We continue to adjust. Smart passes were added. A new, it's a new pass system on computers that allows teachers to sign kids out or kids to lock themselves out of the bathroom. Recently, it's been put up to seven minutes to get there and back. It's received mixed responses, but it's new and it's a work in progress. So we're all adjusting to it. And as well as, I'm just, I mean, I share the students' responses. So it's up the progress. But there was also new phone rules. Just new rules regarding phone classes have been added as well. That's something students are adjusting well. But again, each teacher is different in their classroom. So it still depends. But that is, that is what we've been adjusting to. It's different for some students going from Dirki to the high school. But then us, at least juniors and seniors, we've been here. So we're a little more used to it, but still adjusting. September, Suicide Awareness Month. It's important to be educated on the topic and as well to be respectful and offer a helping hand to those who are struggling. Ballenville has an amazing support system. It continues to grow. So that's something that we really should emphasize this month to let our students know that we are there for them. And tomorrow, Senior Parent Night, where parents can go and they will go over the college applications with the seniors and the senior parents and kind of just guide them on what the process would be like for their seniors who will be going to college this year. And this Friday, also at Baker, an activity there will be held for students to learn about and join clubs that can be robotics, Baker News, yearbook, ski club, student council, all sorts of different clubs. And it kind of just allows them to kind of get a feel of a lot of the clubs that are there. And there are even more that may not be there. But that's how the first week has been. It's been crazy, but we're adjusting. And it definitely is work in progress. But so far, it's been pretty good.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Good information. Appreciate it. Now, our request to speak, Kimberly, do we have any requests to speak tonight? Can I just pause for a moment and ask, how's the sound in the back room good? Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay. Now moving on to Consent Agenda. Resolved, Board of Education approved the Consent Agenda pursuant to be attached. Sam? And Don? Any questions or discussions on the Consent Agenda?
I know you've answered this question before, Dr. DeBarbary, just in reference to the issue to compensation for extracurricular activities. I know it's contractual. I just can notice that athletics is slightly higher. Can you just remind me the rationale behind that? And I know it has to do with the course and the culture. But I just didn't remember because it was just something, just for you.
So it really is all dependent on the amount of time that they're working with students. So that's how those rates were established. And we'll see that we're adding. And we'll see that we're adding a lot of extras under the, the first one there. Number one, the, scroll up Renee, two years ago, thank you, people. The non-contractual rates revive. So it's exciting that we have more and more opportunities for students, but we will continue to look at that. We have to make adjustments in future years based on how some of these programs go and the amount of contact time with students. We will certainly do that.
Do you consider pickleball?
Pickleball? No, we've got a great record first, so that's a good idea.
I think I saw Radisson just converted some of the test courts to pickleball and then convert by the.
That would be desirable for us to do.
No, I know. Our test courts are pretty well-used.
A lot of the town parks are taking their basketball court to portable pickleball nets out. So they'll have the court painted, then they'll have a pickleball court painted on top of it, and then they can just roll them. That's how that works.
Other discussion, other questions? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then for new business, the first new business is a textbook adoption. And the following adoption, the following textbook request being presented by Assistant Superintendent with Curriculum. And then as to, I guess, we should be voting on this, or is this a first?
No, this is a first read. Sorry. So if there are questions?
So the book is Murdered on the Orient Express, which is what, 1930? When was that written?
I think it was 36 or 37.
1934.
It's good. Okay, I guess any, any questions or discussion on the book?
Interesting. I did, I did reach out to Legal when I had an opportunity. So they are researching whether we have to have a first reading for these types of items. So as soon as I get a response, we can decide what we do moving forward, similar to what we did with the athletic trips. And co-physical trips.
Just as a point of explanation, so one of the questions, in the interest of efficiency, we have always practiced a first reading and a second reading. That would mean that you'd have a first reading one month and it'd be a full month before you approve it. So in the interest of efficiency and not holding up any classroom progress, we talked about just approving on a first reading. So that's a compliment. Okay.
And is this book going to be used this year at this purchase?
Yes.
And what's the turnaround time on that book?
So we have the PO ready to go, so as soon as it gets approved, we will put it in. Hopefully within two to three weeks, we'll have that. The teachers were well aware that there was going to be a lag in getting the book. So they are planning their curriculum accordingly, so that when the book comes in, they're going to start probably January, February with that text. So they should be, they should be fine and we should have that in plenty of time. But this, the one read will absolutely help the process because it is a long time to go through, to select the text, to fill out the forms, to have all the conversations that we need to have about the text that we want to use, and then get them in front of a board, and then ordering. It just takes a long time.
Okay, good question. Then we'll move on to B, which is a trip request resolved the Board of Education, a second reading on trip request, I should say, maybe. Resolve the Board of Education approve the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team. Travel and participate in the Burton Hills Cross Country Invitational, October 13th, 14th, 2023, at Saratoga State Park in Saratoga Springs, New York. Motion, please. Wayne, Luke? Any questions on this? This is a long-running meeting that they've intended, I know. Okay, discussion? Pursuant, we'll vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And another second reading. Resolve the Board of Education approve the Girls Soccer Team to travel and participate in the Oleana Games, September 23rd and 24th, 2023, at Oleana High School in Oleana, New York. Pursuant to be attached. Motion, please. Don, Andrew? Any questions on this? This is, that's the National Soccer Hall of Fame in Oleana. They're long-attended. Okay, we'll proceed to vote then. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And then second, D, item D. Second reading. Resolve the Board of Education approve the Girls Barstool Field Hockey Team to travel and participate in a regular season game versus Williamsville North High School, September 29th and 30th, 2023, at Stadium Field in Buffalo, New York. Pursuant to be attached. Luke? Sam? Okay, because of the travel to Buffalo is the reason this is on.
If it is, is it overnight?
Yeah. So discussion, questions? Okay, we proceed to vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Now E. Resolve the Board of Education approve the agreement and resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies. Pursuant to be attached. Motion. So, Andrew? Wayne? So we probably need a little bit of explanation here. I know that a number of school districts are adopting this. And are you the expert on this?
I wouldn't say I'm the expert, but similar to the Juul litigation agreement that we approved two years ago, this is an opportunity to join a lawsuit against social media companies given some of the inappropriate, I guess, use that is resulting in students. And so ultimately, we would be looking at joining this and there's really no cost. And we'd be working with our law firm, who's joining with a larger law firm. Similar to the Juul agreement, we were able to receive approximately $87,000 in one of the Juul settlements. And we have another one that I actually received today and we will be placing on the agenda at the October 2nd meeting. So we see this as a kind of a win-win situation. If anything, I see it as an opportunity to hopefully hold some of the social media companies accountable for, you know, making sure that it's used appropriately. Many of these sites, you're supposed to be 18 years of age or older. And we all know that there are students and underage individuals utilizing these platforms. So it's, it's an effort to try to help make things better for everyone.
Yeah, in my mind too, it's not really about money at all. It's just like under the vaping, the Juul vaping issue was the advertising to underage and the promotion through what, Flair Bird and all that. So what we're really doing here is trying to pursue means to have social media self-police and take down inappropriate and not do, as Jill mentioned, not allow just people on there just saying dating them over 18 and no checks whatsoever.
Similar to the Juul, so we plan as a district to utilize the money that we receive to educate knocking and make sure the students aren't using those devices, so there's some censors. So that's what we've allocated and I would assume that we would use any monetary funds that we're receiving from this to put back into educating appropriate social media and multimedia use.
That's a great comparison. Just curious, do you have any feelings on social media and?
Regarding social media, it can be used next, it can be used for good. We have more professionally used pages from the district saying, follow players like Fonz and Student Action and watches for sports teams. They're run also by adults, so they're run again professionally. But there are times where students had, there was a series of things where students were, pictures were taken of students without their consent, and that was, that was a pretty, it was a very kind of, I don't know, I want to say insane, interesting, but a lot of students, oh, I don't like pictures taken of me. It kind of, it's something that, I mean, it kind of, it really died down. But that's something that was going on when I believe it was two years ago. I did think it happened last year, if I recall. But when, I mean, it's all, it's really, again, it's like you want to try to say like, oh, these, or like protect my kids or like if they're not above age of 18, absolutely, if they're 18, 18-year-old. It would be good to have checks, but it's only, you can only do so much with students. And it really is up to them how they use the social media platform and use a curriculum ad. And the biggest thing I think that needs to be honest, is just to teach them the right thing to do. And, I mean, when they're not with us and not at school, there's only so much that we can teach them. We can teach them as much as we can, like, no taking pictures without someone's consent. Don't post those pictures. Don't post something without someone's consent. I mean, we try to emphasize that as much as we can, but again, when they go home, it's different. It's different for everybody, so it can, it can go both ways. But I think it's really just, it's up to us to kind of teach and to emphasize like it's, take pictures without consent or to use social media in the wrong way when you're on school grounds. But when they're at home, they, it's up to them how they use it, how they, what they post on Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok. All those different social media sites, Facebook, I mean, adults use them as well. But it's really up to the person how they decide to approach that social media platform.
Thank you. Thank you, Reba. Other questions, discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor? All being opposed? Motion carries. Then F. Resolve the Board of Education approve the contract agreement between the Volta Central School District and Onadog County Sheriff's Department for School Resource Officer and Special Patrol Resource Officers Services from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Pursuant to be attached. Motion, please. Luke? Wayne? Discussion or questions? Okay, this is the same one. Move to vote. All in favor? Opposed? Being opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item G. Resolve the Board of Education approve the agreement with OC and OCs for facility use and provision of ancillary services commencing on September 1, 2023, expiring midnight June 30, 2024. Pursuant to be attached. Wayne? Don? Again, the longstanding agreement. Any questions or discussions? Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Staying.
Staying? Okay, thank you. So one objection, so it will be six to one, six zero one, excuse me. Okay. And H. Resolve the Board of Education approve the district's universal pre-K plan for 2023, 2024 school year. Pursuant to be attached. Motion? So, Andrew? Luke? This is a new requirement, is your answer?
This is new as part of our application for universal pre-K. They added this layer that we had to have a plan approved. This is a very basic plan, consistent to the plan that we put in place when we were expected to report out for the ARP funding. So we are, we need this in order to submit the application, which we will submit the application. Hopefully, Valley meeting tomorrow. Yes?
Just a clarifying question about the language under program design. Programs effectively serve to help people and children. I'm just wondering, the second paragraph, this is between two capital projects that are to support that. So just as a suggestion, adding a little sauce, meat, dairy, just to sort of mix that to that. It just stayed out of place. And I wasn't sure if that was for the pre-K or capital projects again, so.
So, yeah, so just to clarify, we can look at that. This is for knowing that we don't have, if we wanted to truly, you know, cover every eligible eligible pre-K child in the district, we need more facilities. And so we know with the long-term project and potential, hopefully, future efforts with funding improvements and building in future, we will be able to think about that as we, as we move forward. They did want to see a long-term impact in the grant application.
I appreciate, I appreciate the clarity. I think indicating that you just shared that in that paragraph just adds just more impact, I think that's all. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I think we're ready to vote then. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And I. Resolve the Board of Education approve the Volta Central's budget calendar process for 2024, 2025. Pursuant to be attached. Wayne? Sam? I believe what we're doing, we're just moving this forward just a little bit, aren't we? So.
Yeah, the format is a little different. You know, it has everything here that we need to know about the budget process, all of the dates, holds all of us accountable to that. And you will see that we are pushing budget workshops to December and January so that we can have really the board in a good place to approve some things prior to the time that we did this past year.
So just trying to give ourselves a little bit more buffer here and maybe a little more time. Any other questions? You proceed to vote.
I think it's a great tool of community and for creative process.
We're ready to vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J. Resolve the Board of Education correct to amend the key measure completion date for the 2023, 2024 Board of Education district goals. Pursuant to be attached. Motion? So, Wayne? Or excuse me, Andrew, when Wayne was raising his hand. Okay, so we just missed a date here.
The date has surpassed. It's not anything substantial or not substantive, so you see the change.
Okay, we proceed to vote then. No questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. K. Resolve the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement between the Volta Central School District and Sprout Therapy Management for Professional Services from September 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Pursuant to be attached. Motion? Wayne? Sam? Okay, so brief explanation here.
These are for services for students that are hospital-based or home-instructed. So it's a way to provide those supports without our staff who are already being utilized for providing services in the district. And this is a typical contract that we're getting in the cycle now and bringing all of them to the board. Our hope is that moving forward, every single one will be tied to the REORG meeting so that we can do them all. We're getting there.
So we have previously been operating under assumption that if it was under a certain dollar level, I forgot what that was, it was a minor dollar level, that the board would not approve the contract. So now we think going forward, we're going to approve all contracts. So I saw the cost of, is there any top stopper? You want to have a budget for this if you don't exceed, I'm guessing, carry.
Well, no, it's based on need for students, so it comes out of the grant money that's payable for students that need limited services based on their ID's.
Another good point is the date, I guess. Any more questions on this? So this has been done on an ongoing basis. It just hasn't been board-approved contract for my best. Okay, seeing no hands, I guess we'll proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then, in the same vein, we'll vote to... Which one is it? No? Yes, thank you. We saw the Board of Education approve the contract agreement between the Voltsville Central School District and Rachel Mosier for Music Therapy Services from September eleventh, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four pursuant to be attached. Wayne and, and Luke? And this is a very similar situation. Okay, any discussion or questions on this?
How many students are involved in this?
We have around one or two students within the district that receive his therapy, and some of those students are also students that are in full mom. It's really reserved for students that are not meeting their goals through, um, other related services. And so it's a way to try to engage them, um, when nothing else is working.
I think we're ready to vote then. Correct? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And moving to M. We saw the Board of Education approve disposal of surplus equipment, vehicles, and instructional materials pursuant to the attached list. Motion, please. Andrew?
Second.
Wayne? And, uh, questions, discussion, anything there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, then that, that completes our business, so the roundtable of the first point of business on the roundtable is the, uh, amendments and resolutions. And we saw that in our packet. There was a crew, Central School District has been very busy.
Yes, they have.
Uh, and who else? There's one more that, uh, I'm conservative, I can't remember who it was. But, so, what, in the, I don't think we want to go down all, what, eighty-eight, I don't remember whatever it was, but the point that I think is on the bottom. Uh, forty, what was it, forty-two pages, I believe?
Fifty-six.
Thank you, fifty-six. So, so I guess let's first talk about our resolution, which, on page thirty-one, uh, the, I see the New York State School Boards chose not to issue an opinion on this. And our representative, Mr. Miller, um, Mr. Miller, so your virtual meeting is on the sixteenth, I believe.
Yes, do we need to extract an opinion from them on this?
No, I, I, uh, I'm not sure. Uh, I don't, I have a feeling they're not going to give an opinion, which means they don't, uh, they don't oppose it, but they're neutral on it right now, so I think they need to ruminate maybe. Uh, as you saw, what they said is, is, uh, that the current situation where you can choose between September first and...
November, uh, December first.
December first, uh, provides extra flexibility. I, I think one of the things that does get lost, as Joe pointed out, is that if you don't do universal pre-K, the first year you're eligible, you don't have a chance to go back and do it. So if you withhold your child from universal pre-K because they're, pick a number, an October birthday, the first year, you can't go back and do it the second year, because then they are technically eligible for kindergarten. So that's one point, definitely clear up that issue, and I think many people don't understand that issue. But after that, I think it's a question of, do you believe in a firm cutoff? Or you want to give people options, right? Does anybody, maybe, uh, some of our educators have thoughts one way or another?
I just know we brought it forward from the Policy Committee, and that's how it initially started. We, we discussed that at the, uh, over the summer at one of our workshops, uh, the first meeting. So, I mean, from, from that standpoint, I mean, it does, it does create some issues, uh, that people have to, um, you know, really think about. So this would ultimately make it, I think, easier for the district to project class sizes, you know, who's, who's here, who's not. People always have the opportunity to, you know, choose other options than, you know, public school setting if they, if they so choose. But again, I think this is our, our first stab at putting something out there, whether it goes forward. You know, it's something that could be considered at least, you know, it would be, be interesting to see what feedback the rest of the number of schools have, uh, at the actual, um, discussion portion. Other than this one, my suggestion would be for these, uh, I have a document that I put together at Google Doc, uh, basically listing. So my suggestion for the board would be so that we're, you know, having time to kind of marinate. It's for people to use the Google Doc and to comment whether you agree. And then at the October second meeting, then under the board discussion, we go through anything that is in question. You can put it in the Friday letter. Like, if we assume that we're going to support the NISBA stance, that might be easier. And then we only focus it on the ones where there's disagreement. Um, otherwise, we could be here for hours. So if you're okay with that, that would be my suggestion moving forward.
So, uh, on the sixteenth, they're going to go through these. And will they change position in some cases, or will they, they'll vote on each one, right?
Right, every member school gets to vote.
So all the schools will take a vote. And I assume most schools are going to support the New York State School Board's position.
Yeah, I think, I have never attended, but I think there's definitely something.
Wayne, uh...
So I attended last year, and basically they, you know, just read, read what the resolution is. They ask for questions or discussion. Sometimes the, the school board, um, that submitted it will kind of give a little bit more information as to why they suggested it. And then, um, there's a virtual vote, like you just hit like a thumbs up or a thumbs down. They tabulate the total number of votes, and then either passes or doesn't, so. Um, NISBA kind of keeps to themselves, like they don't really give an opinion, they just put it out there, and then, um, kind of.
Wayne, is that, is that typically true with all resolutions, that NISBA kind of keeps quiet and lets districts vote?
Yeah.
Or are they, are there instances where they say, yes, we like this, or no, we don't like that?
Not that I've heard.
Okay, so this is...
They, they, right, they don't, they don't...
I think they did oppose some though, in the, in the, if you read down there, they did oppose some of them.
Right, but I, I, I don't think in the dialogue that, that they don't, they're just giving their suggestion, you know, I mean, their, their counsel, so to speak, as to what they would support or what they think, but it's up to us to vote, so.
Because my, my thing, because you've been to one of these, not not, so I kind of need to pick your variables.
Sure.
My initial thinking on this was, like you said, make, you know, get a little, a little, you know, put a pitch in.
Right.
Um, but, you know, like any teacher, start drawing up questions and get a discussion going, and see where there might be pockets of resistance and try to knock it down, possibly.
Sure.
Is that something that's typically done at one of these meetings?
Yeah, so, yeah, like I said, the, they'll ask, like, the, the group that submitted it, if they want to add anything. Some of them are super quick, some people will get on and give a long, lengthy explanation. Then some people will ask questions and have a little back and forth. Um, it all kind of depends on what the topic is. I feel like last year's topics were much more polarizing than these ones are. I feel like most of these, I haven't gone through all of them, but are kind of straightforward, um, nothing too crazy, so. Um, but yeah, there's, there's dialogue, and a lot of times they'll ask questions to the district that proposed it. You know, okay, well, what's your thought here, what's your thought there? You know, they'll give, yeah, so some of them are super quick, where it's like, anybody have any questions? Anyone need an explanation? Nope, all right, and vote, you vote, and then you move to the next one, so. But yeah, there's definitely discussion, so there's definitely back and forth, and, you know, they'll tell you how to use everything. They'll, they'll turn your mic on so you can talk and, and all that kind of stuff, so. One pretty simple from last year.
Excellent, thanks.
So if we've come prepared at the next meeting to object to anything, we assume that we're supporting what they've identified? That way, Don has direction, otherwise he's just... I think what we did last year is, there was a couple that we, we discussed, like, okay, what's our thoughts on this? What's, what do we want to vote, um, on some of the ones that, I guess, were more up in the air kind of thing, so. Um, but, I mean, we trust that Don is going to make the right vote, or the vote that we would as a group. Hopefully, it consists of this way, so, uh, but yeah, so if there's anything that anyone is concerned with or wants to discuss, I would say it's probably good idea to talk about it at the next meeting, so that we're all...
Yeah, gives it a little time break to have a little bit of thought. Do you know when, do, at, at the, and do they take these in this order?
Yes. And then, I feel like I remember if they run out of time, and, like, they have them in order of priority kind of too. So like the ones that, and again, I haven't gone through all of them, but ones that aren't necessarily, I guess, a top priority. If they don't get to it in time, they don't get to it. Like, I remember last year, there was like, the first thirty-five were ones that they had to get through, and then the last, whatever, where if we get to them, we get to them, so, so that's one of those ones.
You should see what you're on the top.
Well, I mean, we're in the middle, I, I think, right? We're now a little over...
Forty-two, we're kind of down, forty-two or fifty-six, right?
Yeah.
What they consider the critical cutoff.
Right, yeah, I don't remember exactly, and I actually ended up having to leave early, I didn't stay for the entire thing, so.
My guess is going to be they're more concerned about the ones they support or oppose.
Right. Some of the top ones, they have no position on, so I don't know if that's, you know, or maybe, who knows, maybe it was by date of submission. I guess we could look at that.
I, I believe the listing is by date of submission.
No, I'm looking, no, it's not.
You think? No?
Actually, we seem to have seven of them.
Oh, and they...
Yeah, I just saw June one, and then in July one, July fourth, June, so I don't think, I'm not sure. Maybe it says on the first page.
Forty-three was submitted right after us, I see. So put, put down the forty-four, just out of curiosity. Seven twelve, maybe? Okay.
Might be a good question to ask, because it's not somewhere in one of those first couple of explanation pages.
But you could probably email questions ahead of time too, right?
Yes.
So, okay. I guess, uh, then we'll, to be continued. Thank you, Dela Boo. Okay. Anything else, uh, for roundtable tonight? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just got one thing off my head.
Go right ahead.
I missed it, I didn't have, um, summary, but there, um, at Baker and at Derby, there are, uh, metal detectors being added at entrances. Um, they will be implementing them either this week or next week, yeah, um, right? It may be later.
They might all end yet, yeah, threat detection system, yeah?
Yeah, threat detection systems, and, um, students are also starting to become aware of that. But I just want, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I had included that, because it is, it's a new thing, it's important. And it's for our safety with a lot of stuff that has been happening the last year. So it will be something to get used to. Students are unsure if their binders will set off at a possibility, or someone's metal spooling a lunchbox. So students are becoming aware of that, and I think a lot of us are trying our best to make sure that we don't have notebooks with a bunch of metal in it, so we don't have to go to the side every morning, but myself included, but, um, I agree. If it goes off, it goes off, but it's, I'm not sure how it will happen or when it will, but I want to make sure it was included, because it is something that will be a new thing for both, both schools, and will also be something to get used to.
Uh, good, uh, thank you for bringing that up, playa. The good news is that the building administration at the high school, they're meeting with students in their, um, their code of conduct meetings this week, and so they'll be having some smaller group demonstrations. And, you know, they'll know what to experience when it comes, uh, time for these to be fully implemented. So it's kind of nice to do a slow rollout.
They are doing them, I believe, at the, the meetings, from what I heard, they're happening during gym.
Yes.
So they did them today and tomorrow, obviously, tomorrow, so I'll be able to see everything, um, since I have gym in the morning, so, quite an early. But, um, yeah, it's, the students, I think, that's where, like, we heard of it previously, but I think a lot of students are also now starting to find out through that, and they are there. I think that's what, like, a lot of it is, but.
There'll be, there'll certainly be more communication, and I know that has gone out to the families in the virtual times, uh, I think twice now, I don't know. And, um, Baker's first, and then it will be Derby, um, and, and some other good news related to that. And this is all being ultimately funded through the Smart Schools Bond Act at this point. We did get clear, uh, clarification that the State Education Department is approving these devices, uh, and they weren't initially doing that. So that's, that's really good, and based on the application that we submitted in the, the, uh, public, um, survey, you know, was highly, highly sought after, uh, from our school community, so.
And how did you show me, so this actually, in a strange way, ties in with our conversation about grading and policy grading. Um, you know, sort of law, like, ten consequences, right? Students with binders and, you know, spiral notebooks and things like that. We don't really want to discourage kids from taking homework home, because they can't get it back in the building on, you know, the way they want to. But Dr. Gardner, you, you said something that, that I think is important. This isn't as linear as a metal detector. This is a threat detection system, which includes shapes, and perhaps compositions, and things like that. Can you unpack that?
That is correct. I mean, it could be anything from, um, knives to guns, uh, you know, um, things.
It's a certain amount of metal, correct?
And it's the shape too of the actual, there's a whole bunch of factors that go into, uh, these systems. So that's why it's, uh, threat detection is closer just to metal detector.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, except I was like, oh, I assume for those, you live alone in an airport every morning, and like, you got to put all your stuff in a bucket, slide it to the side, and then you go through and you wipe it up.
Take your shoes off. It'll be similar.
Shoes off, yeah, y'all, necklace, phone, box, a bucket.
The goal though is, and this is where I think the approach that the high school administration is taking, and they're kind of the, the ones that are, you know, leading, leading the way. It's about educating the students so they don't bring items, deterrent, right? So if you know that a date or something else for that matter is going to, just don't, right? If you, if it's not intended to be here, um, I do know that based on the shape, the Chromebook, so they will have, students will have to, um, place the Chromebook off to the side, same thing with cell phones. We plan to have these on the highest setting, because, you know, God forbid we adjust the setting, which we had the ability to do, and then something got through that, you know, that would be an issue. So we're going with the highest setting.
Thank you for the, for the fact, nine, a lot of students, definitely, it'd be better for me to be able to bring this to our student bodies. A lot of us, when we first heard about this, I mean, um, student advisory council, when I was helping with sophomore orientation, a lot of us were kind of discussing it, like, oh, is this going to be set off? Is this going to be set off? How far will it push us back in the morning to students, since it's, um, I'm worried about, saying we get off on the bus in the morning? Have we got to take certain, like, stuff out? I know it's required, just with, like, shapes and everything, but how long will it take to get in the building? Say if it's snowing outside, or it's raining, and students are kind of caught in that? But I'm sure it means it's new, so it's a work in progress. Um, that's just, I just definitely think, I just think it's, I know, so I can bring that in serious.
We want it to be as efficient as possible. Our goal is not to create a twenty to thirty minute period, uh, prior to getting into the building. So we think with all the things that we're proactively doing, um, to get the information out there to students and to families, I think will make a difference. And then they are anticipating, from what we know of other districts that have implemented, uh, these devices, that it does take some time to eventually get into a habit. And, uh, the high school administration is thinking those first few days, that they'll be on a delayed schedule, uh, so that you're not missing all the first period of those, like, similar to what we did for the first three days of school. Each of the periods were shortened, so that we could allow for early release to accommodate the elementary ones with transportation. So all of that is in the works at this point, but it will be communicated when we're...
Thanks, you have a good question. Okay. I guess with that, are we, oh, mine?
I have something to bring up.
Yes.
So I appreciate it, and, and I ask for everyone's grace, uh, because I wasn't sure of how to approach this. And the purpose of this is just collectively as a board, just to just be reflective about how we use language in spaces. And I say this with love, because, um, sometimes in heated moment, or even in spaces, sometimes you're celebrating and excited, and sometimes we don't necessarily think about the language we use. However, you know, when you're in spaces and you're listening, sometimes it has the impact. And the wondering is, maybe the intent wasn't to create a perception. impact, and the wondering is, maybe the intent wasn't to create a perception, but sometimes that happens. So I could bring to the space, I really enjoyed the opening day event. It was pretty awesome being on the sideline, standing next to Renee, and seeing from that perspective, all these individuals, amazing educators, and everyone who supports the school, the bleachers, and on the fifty-yard line, and Joe, you were there, and he was, informally, forgive me, at that moment, being in the fifty-yard line, and the van, and Casey and Ford, and it was pretty cool. And, and I was celebrating, and I was excited, and I just, I've never experienced something like that, so it was really amazing. So I, I guess my wondering is, because I got some cool feedback about specific language that was used, that was perceived as, maybe unintentionally, that there was some reference to how previous board had acted. And the words were used as such, that it's time we focus on students, and that was the language, right? And, and I guess my wondering is, my perception, out of all the wonderful things that were said by you, Mr. Jenkins, Dr. Barry, that, that, those few words in that context created perception for some, that there was something that was implied, that there wasn't a focus on kids in previous iterations of this board. And I just want to be clear, I know that wasn't intentional, and with language, I think in this case, for some, it was received that it was something other than what it was intended for. And I just want to be mindful that, put this in the space, because it's not to call anyone in, but just be mindful that last year was a tough year for this district, and there was a lot that was accomplished despite the challenges, despite some of the devastation and obstacles. A, a lot of what was done last year by this board and by this district was because of kids, and I don't want that to be lost. And so I bring that to the space, because I don't think it was intentional, I just wanted to bring in the space that some were seen as such, and I just want to honor those who have been before me and laid a lot of wonderful groundwork on behalf of students, and we're going to continue, use it, and continue to rock and grow and be wonderful, and I just wanted to share that.
Well, thank you, I don't think anyone had any attention to that. And I, I will say, just to support what you said, the graduation rate last year, for the four-year cohort was ninety-five percent, and in my past twelve years on the board, we never achieved ninety-five percent. And for five-year cohort, it's seven, ninety-seven percent. So though, that in itself says a lot of the things happening. Okay, anything else for roundtable? Or in view of the fact that the bills will kick off shortly, I think we have a bunch of exactly, yes, that's, that's our timeline. Okay, we saw the Board of Education enter the executive session, discuss the employment history of a particular person in five-year negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law, and discuss the CSE, CSEA contract.
Someone?
It's Connie. Don? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Five minutes is exact, thank you.